I will call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order. It is February 28th, and the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Next item is roll call.
Elder Allen?
Present.
Mayor Heradefrada?
Yes.
Elder Gerhart?
Here.
Elder Hurst? Elder Jetser?
Here.
Elder Maldonado has indicated he is delayed. Elder Strassmann? Elder Udell?
Here.
Elder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, next item is the approval of minutes of the January 24th meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public appearances for any non-agenda items. I don't have any registrations for that, so seeing nobody rushing out of their seats to come forward and proclaim their needs to the city, we will move on to Agenda Item 6A, which is the street resurfacing project update, and Ross will be presenting that from the Public Works Department, so take it away, Ross.
Thank you. Just sharing my screen and my presentation here. So I think everybody up there knows, but I'm Ross Kahler. I'm the Transportation Engineer with the city, and Tim is here to my right.
Tim Volker, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
So I'm gonna basically be giving an update on the street resurfacing project for 2024, and then going through how we set up our street projects in general and how we plan for future years. So basically, I'll be going through how we rate our roads, and then the general condition of all of our 145 miles of roadway. Then go through our different options for road construction, then go through how we reach out to residents and notify them of the construction and our other outreach methods, then our project calendar for this year, and the goals of our streets program going forward. So just a little bit of background information. This is kind of the parts of a road. Tim was just telling me he likes to use the analogy of a cake, and these are the layers of the cake. We start off with the subgrade, which is the native soil that's in place before you start construction. Then, an optional thing in Wisconsin is a sub-base course. Basically, if the subgrade is not good enough to support a road, then you can add additional material to help the road hold up better. Then you move into the base course, which is an aggregate material. It's usually about 12 inches thick. On larger roads like Fish Hatchery Road, it's a lot thicker, up to three feet in that case, I believe. Then you get into the binder course, which is asphalt, and the surface course, which is also asphalt. So everything we pave is in two layers, basically. So we have two different methods of actually rating our roads. This is kind of the first step in our process. WISTO requires that we rate our roads using the PACER system every two years. So PACER is Pavement Surface Evaluation and Rating System. It's a 1 to 10 scale. One is the worst. That's basically an asphalt road that looks like it's gravel at this point, and a 10 is a brand-new road that you just paved that year. PACER's a visual assessment. You're not actually doing any measurements. You're just basically looking at the road, usually while you're driving in a vehicle, and assigning it a 1 to 10 rating. And some of the more detailed parts of that I'll get into on the next few slides. This system was developed by UW-Madison, so it's kind of designed to work really well in Wisconsin, and it's also used nationwide. Another option that we sometimes use is the Pavement Condition Index, or PCI. That's a 0 to 100 scale, and that has some statistical parts of it where you're actually counting the number of cracks and the width and different factors like that, and using that to come up with that 0 to 100 number. And this is mainly used, in our case, for automated assessments. There's a few companies in Fitchburg that will basically drive all of your roads and take video, and then use basically AI to come up with your PCI rating. So this is an example of a road that is a PACER rating of 9 or 10. In this case, it's a 10. This is the new section of Lacy Road. We obviously just finished this not even six months ago. This pavement is obviously still in great shape. There's no visible distress, and we wouldn't do any treatment to this road. Then we kind of move down into the PACER ratings of 7 to 8. This is Waylon Road in between Muchler and Fish Hatchery. This is a very good pavement or a new chip seal. Basically, there's paving joints visible. You can see down the center line of the road there, the pavement joint, and then you can usually see transverse cracks that's going across the road every 20 to 40 feet. Basically, for a road rated 7 to 8, you just want to do routine crack sealing every 3 to 4 years. PACER rating of 5 to 6 would be something like Muchler Road. The pavement's visibly aging here, but it's still in pretty good condition to drive on. You start seeing some ravelling, which is the surface wear, where you start seeing aggregate more than just a smooth surface. And then you start getting into longitudinal cracks and wider transverse cracks that are appearing more often as you go down the road. This, we would do either a chip seal or a patching project, and then chip seal over the top of it. And I'll get into some of these treatments in a few more slides. A rating of 3 to 4 would be something like Marketplace Drive. You can see here that the pavement itself is failing, and the cracks and potholes are allowing water to get down into the base course and actually damaging the aggregate underneath the road. These defects are called block cracking or alligator cracking. You can see that the cracks are starting to form more cracks off of the original larger ones. This is where we start getting into resurfacing, where we take up the asphalt and replace it. Then a PACER rating of 1 to 2. Thankfully, we don't have very many of these in the city. This is Fitchrona Road. This is the worst road in the city, and it's... Right now, we have it rated a 2. It probably could be a 1 if we saw it on a worse day. But basically, the pavement and the base course are... Have completely failed on this road. You have severe alligator cracking and larger potholes and rutting. In this case, resurfacing is not cost-effective. We would want to move into a full reconstruction project where we replace more of the base course and not just the asphalt.
Ross, where were the something like Bryant Street Fit?
Bryant? I...
That's one of the new roads we acquired from the town.
Yes. I believe we have that rated as a 3. I would have to look at our map and actually have that coming up later. There's a PACER rating of the whole city, so... This is a graph of pavement condition by age. This is kind of an average of how roads degrade over time. So you can see, you start off at a 10, obviously. You stay at a good rating for a longer amount of time, and then as you move down through the 6s to 4s, down to 3s, the roads degrade very quickly if you don't do any maintenance on them. That's because water keeps getting into cracks and potholes, and it just keeps making things worse and worse and worse. So this is basically a capital project, which is something like reconstructing or resurfacing. Would cost in the $0.5 million to $1 million range on about a mile of road, and you can take a road from that rating of 2 or 3 back up to a 10 at the cost of a lot of money. Then you can get into your maintenance projects, like chip sealing and crack sealing, and spend a 10th of that amount of money and get it from a 5 or a 6 back up to a 7 or an 8. That's obviously not as big of a jump in your PACER rating, but it's also a lot less money to spend at one time. So this is a map of our entire city. I don't want to get into the weeds too much on this with specific roads, but since Bryant Road was already asked about... It's up in the corner here. Yeah, I believe we have it rated as a 3. I don't think you guys can see my mouse.
It looks red.
Yes. So red on this map is worse, green is better. The main thing I kind of want to talk about here is that you can see our rural roads to the south, there's a lot more red in that section than in the urban roads to the north. We've done a pretty good job of keeping our urban neighborhood roads in better shape. There is still some work to do there, but one of the focuses this year is going to be on those more rural roads and resurfacing those, and using our maintenance activities on the more urban roads to keep them in decent shape. So this is a graph of our average PACER rating as a city. So this... The bottom line of this graph is 6.1, and the top line is 6.7. So our PACER ratings have stayed fairly consistent for about eight years now. We've only gone from a 6.15 in 2016 up to about a 6.6 in 2023, and then this last year, we kind of came down to a 6.5. Some of the reasons for that are we didn't do any capital projects, we didn't do any resurfacing in 2022, we didn't do any maintenance projects in 2023, and this past year was the first year that our new public works staff have rated the roads, and the PACER rating is fairly subjective. So we may have been harsher raters than the last set of public work staff, or maybe our roads are just actually in worse shape.
But Ross, it is worth pointing out that this scale goes from basically 6.1 to 6.6, so it's a pretty tight range, really, on the scale of 1 to 10.
Exactly. Yes. So that 10th drop from 2023 to 2024, really, if we rated one mile of road one rating better, that could very well go away. So this is a little more detailed breakdown of our PACER ratings. Each color here is a group of two PACER ratings, so green's good, red's bad. This can kind of explain that last graph a little bit. As you can see, in 2024, up at the top, we've got less mileage of roads that's a 9 or a 10, and less mileage of roads that's a 3 or a 4. We've got more miles clustered around that 5 to 8 range, so we're kind of bringing our bad roads up, and our good roads are slipping slightly as well. So we have a lot of tools in our toolbox to help keep our PACER ratings up and keep our roads in good shape. These are a few of them. There's a lot of other techniques, but these are the main ones the city uses now or has used in the past. In the maintenance category, we have crack sealing, chip sealing, structural overlay, and then patching. And then I'll get into more details of these in a second. And then on the capital side, we do resurfacing or reconstruction, and then there's new construction, which the new construction is not part of this process. That's mainly in our new neighborhoods, our plats. But basically, we have to keep our maintenance and capital budgets separate because the capital budget is obviously set by the CIP and council, and then the maintenance stuff is in the regular annual budget, so... We'll start off with crack sealing. This is by far the cheapest option. It costs about $10,000 to $20,000 per mile of roadway. You'll see, once we get into some of the other options, that they get a lot more expensive very quickly. Basically, the process for this is we clean and route out the cracks. So smaller cracks, we basically run a saw down and make them wide enough to actually put the sealant in. Then you heat up the cracks with a heat lance and seal them with flexible asphaltic sealer. So this takes about one day. It's very in and out, very easy to do. Residents sometimes don't even notice that you've done this work on their street.
One day to do a mile?
A mile would be a little bit longer than that, but on a regular street, on a regular city block, you'd be less than a day. This is a map of the roads that we are crack sealing in 2024. So you can see, like I said, we're kind of concentrating on our urban neighborhood roads and making sure we keep those in decent shape by not allowing water to get in those cracks and cause damage. Then kind of the next more intensive and expensive option is a chip seal. So basically, for this, we would sweep the street, spray down asphalt emulsion over the entire surface of the street, spread stone chips. There's various sizes and types of stone you can use depending on what you want to get out of the chip seal. And then you compact the chips, sweep the excess up, and then you're done. You might have to come back a couple weeks later to sweep again, but there's really only one day of work, and this actually would only take one day to do a full mile of roadway, because this is all truck-based. You're not... You don't have people walking and doing work by hand on this, and it runs up to about $60,000 per mile. This is a map of all the streets that we're chip sealing. As you can see, as we get into the more expensive options, we're doing less miles of road with that activity. So another option that we don't normally use in the city, but is something we could use, and there are contractors in the area that do this work, is a structural overlay. Basically, this, you take up part of the asphalt and then replace it, or you can just put new asphalt over the old asphalt. There's some issues with doing it that way, but it does get you new asphalt for at least a few years. So this runs into the 2 to 4 days of work for a mile of roadway, and then it can obviously about double in cost compared to the chip seal. And I don't have a map for that one because we're not doing any roads with that process this year. So for patching, this is kind of a new tool that we're trying out this year. Basically, if you have a road that's in pretty good shape, and you have some areas that are in much worse shape than others, you can just cut out those damaged sections, repave those, and chip seal over the top of it, and get a new consistent road that's all in about the same condition. This takes a little bit longer. There's more work involved. Someone has to go around with a saw and cut out all these different areas, and then come in and pave small areas of asphalt, which is not as efficient, and the cost reflects that. We're, again, about doubling in cost here per mile of roadway, and this kind of accounts for about 15% of the road being patched per mile.
So...
Yeah.
So do people generally go with that option because it's cheaper to just cut out certain sections of the road per, like, mile versus redoing a whole part of the road with chip sealing?
So basically, our options there would be either patch those small portions, or you chip seal over the top of it, and you... That chip seal fails in a short amount of time, or you spend more money on a resurfacing where you resurface the entire road. So you can kind of think of the patching as like a partial resurfacing.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Ross, is there like a number of patches? Is there some sort of a threshold before you just throw up your hands and say, "No, we're gonna re-surface the whole thing," rather than do 40 patches in a mile?
Yes. So usually, that range is about 20 to 30% of the road, where, once you get into that amount, then you should probably just resurface the whole thing.
But, yeah, I mean, 20 to 30% could mean one stretch of road, like one contiguous stretch, or it could mean 40 separate patches, which I would assume is a lot bigger deal.
Yes. The smaller the patches, the less efficient they are to do, so the more they cost per square foot versus if you're doing 30% of a mile of road that's all in one section, then you're just resurfacing a third of a mile of road, which is... Would be cheaper than patching that same amount in various places. So this is a map of the roads that we're patching. With all of this patching, we're gonna chip seal over the top of it because the road... The rest of the street is in bad enough shape that it should get a chip seal anyways. You can see we're just doing this in kind of select areas of the city, mainly to try it out, see how it works this year. Then we get into our capital projects, so resurfacing is the big one. This is what the city does basically every year as part of this annual project. In resurfacing, you remove the full depth of asphalt. Most of the roads we're doing are 4 inches thick, but larger roads can get up to 6 or even 8 inches. We're replacing only the damaged sections of the base course. We're not replacing all of the aggregate under the roadway. That's really where the cost savings in this option come in. And then we're also only replacing the damaged curb and gutter. So public work staff goes out before the project, marks all the curb that's damaged, and then we form an estimate for the project based on what we've already marked. This takes significantly longer. Takes about 2 to 8 weeks for construction, and can be anywhere from $400,000 to $700,000 per mile.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Yeah. How many miles do we do usually per year on average?
We normally resurface about 2 to 3 miles of road. Last year, we did about 4, and this year, we're doing about 4 again, but that's because we have a little bit of extra money from not doing resurfacing in 2022.
Okay. Thank you.
Ross, is... I mean, you probably have some sort of a formula that says a road is gonna last 30 years or whatever, so you take the total road miles in the city and divide by the expected lifespan, and that's how many miles you do every year?
So we... Yes, kind of. It's mainly dictated by the amount of money that we have in the budget, but we try to set... We try to suggest that budget number by the formula you stated. We have about 145 miles of road. We kind of expect those to last 30 to 35 years, so we need to redo 3 or 4 miles of road a year to meet that goal.
Are we doing Richards? It's on the street this year?
Sorry?
I were doing Richards on the street from Lacy to...
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So not from... Yeah, from Lacy...
To the... Where to?
I forget the cross street. To Cheryl.
Cheryl, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is a map of the streets that we're resurfacing. As you can see, now we're getting into roads like Seminole Highway and Grandview down to the south, so we're spending more time in the rural sections of the city on this part of the project, but we're still picking up some of the worst sections in the neighborhoods to the north.
I have a question. Tim, you mentioned last year when we were working on the CIP about the idea to cluster, you know? So are you planning to do that, or...
Yes, we are planning to do that. It's obviously gonna take time, because the city hasn't followed that. So to kind of bring these... All these roads are rated different, so, you know, you may have a segment of road in your neighborhood that's a 6 and needs a chip seal, but then there's a segment that's a 3 that's getting resurfaced, so, you know, us as staff kind of have to make a decision, you know, do we just reconstruct both segments, and so it's on the same timeframe that we can do it? So we're kind of doing that as much as the budget allows. Obviously, if you reconstruct a road sooner, you know, you're paying for that upfront where you could have did a chip seal and saved that money, you know? So we're strategic... It's more of an art than a science here, is what we're doing, but, you know, I think Ross has a slide of this of all the treatments together, and once you guys see that, you'll see the neighborhood is getting done. You know, right now, we're just... He's showing you the reconstructed street, so it looks, hey, we're only in this area, this area. However, when you see the overall map with all the treatments, you're gonna see, yeah, this neighborhood's getting done. It may be a crack seal, maybe a chip seal, and a reconstruct gets that whole neighborhood done, so...
Oh, okay, okay.
You'll see that, so...
Oh, when you mention cluster, you could be different type of...
Yes.
Ah, okay, okay.
Because each road's rated different, and even a road Richardson, different segments are rated differently, so it requires different treatments, so...
And one of our goals is to get to where we're doing the same treatment in a neighborhood, but like Tim said, we're just not really at that point yet. So then, the slide Tim was talking about is, I think, the next one after this. But the other option is a reconstruction. This is where we're replacing 2 to 3 feet of aggregate below the asphalt because it's completely failed. We also usually take this opportunity to repair or replace the water main or sanitary sewer, and we can also change the cross-section of the road. So if we're adding, say, bike lanes or curb and gutter, that would turn the project into a full reconstruction. This obviously takes longer. Takes 2 to 6 months, which is about four times what a resurfacing takes, and costs a significant amount more. So this is all of the treatments that we're doing to all of the roads in 2024. So you can see with this, we're basically touching all of the roads in Swan Creek and kind of finishing up that neighborhood. We've also got country vineyards down to the south on Fish Hatchery that we're resurfacing that entire neighborhood. It's a small neighborhood, but we're still doing the whole thing. And then we're also finishing up some neighborhoods that we got partially finished in 2023. So the Berry Drive subdivision down off of County Highway MM, there was basically one road left that was in significantly better shape than the rest of them, so we're going in and crack sealing that road, so they'll hopefully all be on the same schedule going forward. So we do have some other selection criteria. By far, the main one is the condition of the road. We also take into account the geographic area that's clustering the roads, and then what other infrastructure projects need to be done. If we have to replace the water main on a road, then we're tearing up the asphalt anyway, and we might as well resurface the whole thing, and hopefully, we planned well enough to not have to tear up a new road twice, which we're pretty good at at this point. Also, if we are gonna do a traffic calming project, that can be a good time to resurface the road as well. So this is a map of our five-year plan for roads. This doesn't show you what activity we're planning on doing to each road. It just shows you what year we are touching that road in. So I think this shows even better kind of the clustering of neighborhoods. Some of them, they're large neighborhoods, so we're taking 2 years to finish those, but we've tried to kind of space them out into not going back into the same neighborhood 2 years in a row. There's some areas, like in Harlan Hills and that area north of McKee, that we've kind of had to do that based on the condition, but a lot of that is also just chip sealing or crack sealing, so it's not as invasive to the residents that live there. And one other thing about the five-year plan, we also adjust this basically every year based on... based on what roads we couldn't get done in the year that we wanted to get done. We might push those off or move other roads up based on where we have to move things around in the year.
I have a question on that previous map. So on Sign Road, north of McCoy, that's basically going, in 2026, that's going from the McCoy-Sign intersection up to the city limits. Are we doing things to coordinate with the City of Madison when we have roads that kind of join theirs?
So in general, I would say no, based on that road in particular. If they're a border road where, like Fitchrhona, say, where our border runs down the center line, then we do do a lot more coordination. But generally, where it kind of dead ends into a City of Madison road, both sections are kind of on their same schedule. We do coordinate pavement markings and stuff like that, so it's not striped in Madison and then all of a sudden that ends in Fitchburg or something. But as far as the maintenance activity, we don't normally coordinate.
I have a question. What is the longevity for a chip seal? You may have stated it, but the reason I ask is I noticed through time, chip seal that was done maybe when I first moved here didn't seem to have a longevity. The snowplow would pull it up, and then you get all the, it almost created a more of a problem. But now I've noticed with the chip seal, some areas are six, seven years without any change at all. I don't know if maybe there's been some improvement or, I mean, can you comment in any way?
Yeah, so in general, I would hope that a chip seal would last five to eight or hopefully even ten years before showing real signs of age. And I think you're right that some of the techniques that the city used for surface treatments, they may not have actually been chip sealed. They might have been something like a slurry seal, which is basically you use a lot smaller, like, sand-sized aggregate versus like larger chips like you normally see. So there can be issues with how that adheres to roads. I know we have a lot of areas where the pavement markings have caused an issue where we've done a surface treatment over the pavement markings, and then that's where it starts to peel off again. With a, what I'll call a normal industry standard chip seal, you don't generally have that issue on a latex pavement markings.
Okay. I mean, just please take it into consideration for whatever you're doing now seems to be a much better quality than what was done before. I mean, prior, you know, case in point would be like Seminole Forest, not the area where you resurfaced, but the the area that was not resurfaced, I don't know, like ten, twelve years ago, that's been chip sealed, and it's still, in my opinion, in great shape. Prior to that, it was just, snowplow would come along and pull up chunks, and then we were living with, you know, the poor quality. I'll use those words.
Yeah. No, we, it's definitely something we're trying to not repeat the.
Well, and to get the longevity out of it as well.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So now we'll get into kind of some of the issues that we've had in the past. One of the main things that we saw in 2023 was that residents felt that our notification about the resurfacing project was not robust enough. So this slide kind of goes into what we have done and what we're still going to do this year to try to correct that. So we had a public involvement meeting on Monday for this project, for the resurfacing. We got about eleven attendees. I was kind of hoping we would have more, but the eleven that came had good questions and good comments. We sent a letter out about that about three weeks ago. And then we'll send another letter out after the pre-construction conference. So basically, once we've selected a contractor, we arrange a pre-construction conference. We talk to them about our expectations and what techniques and schedule they're actually going to follow. And more information about that will be in the letter because that's what residents really want to know about is the schedule. How long's my road going to be torn up? We'll also put out door hangers, the contractor will, forty-eight hours before they begin construction on a particular street. They obviously won't start every street at the same time, and sometimes that timing's hard to predict, so that's why we have a shorter window for those notifications. And then also for resurfacing, we remove the damaged curb and gutter. Sometimes that's directly in front of a resident's driveway, and that impacts them being able to pull their car in and out. So we also notify them specifically forty-eight hours before removing that curb in front of the driveway. Then we also, they knock on their door right before they pull the curb out to say, hey, if you've still got a car in your driveway that you don't want there, move it now. So some other outreach we've been doing, like I said, we had the public information meeting on Monday. We have also updated all of our web pages for both the resurfacing and the maintenance projects. Those have links to text and email notifications and then all the project plans. I also did an interview with Jeremy on Fact TV that's up on the project websites and on Facebook. And then we'll also be utilizing Facebook and a section of the website for updates during construction, so residents can stay up to date. Our kind of internal calendar, we've kind of moved through the fall and the winter parts of this, and now we're right in the middle of the February section. So we held the public involvement meeting, and we're in the middle of letting or bidding this project right now. In March, we will put out the chip seal and crack seal project. And then May, we'll start construction probably on both projects around the same time. Then we'll finish the patching part of the project in June because the chip seal contractor has to come in after the patching, so we want to give them some time. And then in October, that's our deadline for finishing all of these projects. And then these are some goals that we've kind of set for ourselves moving forward for this program. We want to have sixty percent of our road mileage at a Pacer rating of seven or better. Right now, we're at about forty-eight percent of our mileage is a seven or better, so we've got some work to do to get to that point. We also want to concentrate the resurfacing projects geographically and really get to that point where we're just doing individual neighborhoods with one treatment. Then we want to utilize our maintenance activities like the chip seal and the crack seal to minimize the cost of this entire program. We also want to use grants as available. Tim actually sat in a webinar for a grant program today. And then we want to work more closely with our other engineering divisions like the water and sewer and storm utilities and support their projects better instead of just telling them, hey, we're resurfacing this road this year. Do you guys have anything on that road? So we want to work together more on that. And then we also want to minimize the impact to residents. Road construction is really disruptive to people's daily lives, and we want to minimize that any way we can. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Much guy, I seen, I learned a lot today. I have a question. So you said that currently we are at forty-eight percent, and you want to go from forty-eight to sixty percent Pacer seven. What is the timeframe and how much it's going to cost?
So we don't have a a timeframe on that. It's it's not going to be in the next three or even, three or even five years. The the cost can be variable. I mean, we could, we could say we want to go out next year and redo forty miles of road, and that would obviously cost way more than the city's whole budget, probably. But that would get us to that.
Yeah.
Sixty percent. But really, we're going to try to utilize the maintenance activities and keep our, keep our roads at like a seven or an eight for a longer period of time and be able to build that that percentage up.
Yeah, that that's the most cost-effective part is, you know, once you resurface a road and you have that new asphalt down, you start crack sealing and filling those cracks right away so the water can't get in. By doing that, you know, you're not, you're prolonging that curve that Ross showed where it stays flat when it's at a ten. You want to prolong that as long as you can and not have it drop significantly. So all those maintenance treatments, the chip seal, the crack fill, all that helps to to keep that curve flat, flat along the top. So that that's really where the city gets the most bang for its buck. And like Ross said, it's going to take time because once you reconstruct the road and you start doing those treatments, then those, that, you know, it, roads stay at the seven, eight, nine longer. So that's, unfortunately, it is going to take longer, you know, probably, I would say, five-plus years to get to that sixty percent at seven or better.
You know, I mean, five to ten, you know, I mean, it's like.
I remember when we used to do a lot of slurry sealing. And, yeah, we would have, see it get scraped off by the snowplows. And then there was a version of chip sealing that we did that was different than what we do now. I'm pretty sure that they they just, they sprayed down the asphalt material and then dumped gravel on it, and there was no compaction that happened at all. And so so what was described by several of our residents was it's called chip sealing because that's what it does to your car when you drive down it.
That is a pretty common practice with chip seal where the contractor says, well, the the car tires will compact it. And they do, but then that's kind of how you get situations like Richardson where you can, you can kind of see the the tire marks.
Sure.
As you go down that road, so.
Is that, is that type of chip sealing even allowed? I mean, there's, there's rules now about how much dust a road, you know, can can emanate from a road, right?
Yes, so with chip seal, you don't generally get a lot of dust because if you have smaller particles, they embed easier in the asphalt emulsion, but they may not stick for as long, but they're not really coming up in the form of dust. And then if you use a bigger chip, then those aren't as able to go airborne in the first place. But there are a lot of types of chip seal or asphalt emulsions that are not allowed anymore. There used to be, it's called cutback fluid. It's basically like, it's parts of diesel gas. It's really extremely bad for the environment.
You you mentioned, touched on it briefly, but the 2023 projects, you do have Gold Drive and the driveway with the pavers and Timber Ridge and Osmondson on the list, correct?
Correct. So those are other things that kind of came up during 2023 that we're still working with our contractor from last year to address. There's a a brick driveway that needs to still be redone and a concrete gutter that needs to be installed. There's also, all of the pavement marking on that project has not yet been done. It was too cold to apply by the time the paving was finished.
Right.
So I'm going to say, once it gets warm, I know that's going to be tomorrow. But once we get into to spring where we can count on consistent temperatures, then that work will be completed.
They they do call me, and I'm sure Jim's gotten some calls as well. So, but you and I've talked about it. I just want to make certain that it's on the list and we're going to follow through and take care of those outstanding concerns. Yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions, comments, Bill?
I'm just wondering, if you chip seal, can you, how many times can you chip seal the same section of road before you have to do something more drastic?
So generally, you can chip seal twice. That's kind of the rule of thumb. You could, if your chip seal, if your second coat is still in good shape, you can probably get away with a third coat. But if your chip seal is in good shape, then you're probably not thinking about putting another coat on it. So generally, twice. With other surface treatment methods, you can do them more times, or some of them you can only do once, so.
I have one more question for Tim because he's from Florida. How does this curve compare between Wisconsin, where we have winter, and Florida, where you really don't?
The roads are a lot nicer down south. And it's different treatment. So up here, it's the the cold, the the frost, you know, you have that upheaval, that the transverse cracking that happens every twenty, forty feet. You don't see that in Florida. Florida, it's the the sun beats down on the the pavement, breaks down the asphaltines and moltenes in the asphalt. So what we would do is, before even crack sealing it, we would apply a Reclamine, it's called, and it's a sunblock for the road. It protects it from the sun. Yeah, it sprays on pink. When it dries, it it's clear and you don't see it. And, you know, you do that once every five years. And then you do that two or three times, then do the crack sealing. And then we would micro-surface instead of chip seal. So it's it's different. But like down there, it's the the sun I mentioned is what causes the degradation on the road, not so much the the cold.
What's the SPF on that product?
Yeah, right. Fifty-seven.
All right. Any other questions? That was very informative. Can you make sure that this presentation gets sent out to us?
Will do.
That would be great. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thanks so much.
So now we will move on to item B, which is the referendum update and/or discussion. And Chad's going to take care of that. Oh, I guess Adam's coming too. It's a party.
Are we allowed to call them Chatham?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Adam and I have a fairly brief update as it relates to the referendum planning that has been going on. We've got, I think, four or five slides that we'll run through that'll talk about really what's happening currently and what's anticipated to happen over the next several weeks. We've talked at these meetings several times about the referendum over the last eight, nine months or so, so I'm not going to rehash what's been discussed previously tonight. I know you're all aware of that. And for anybody who is watching this evening, all of those meetings are out on the Fact TV website, and they are encouraged to go and and take a look at those particular meetings as it relates to the Committee of the Hall and referendum planning. So what's happening now, on Friday, last Friday, the community survey that has been discussed during these meetings and and referenced at council meetings previously was sent to the printer. That survey, which is designed to identify the areas of interest that were expressed by the common council for consideration in a potential referendum, specifically city staffing, enhancements to transit, and operating costs for the potential police, new police services facility are all contained within that survey. And it gives opportunity for our community to share their input on what they may wish to prioritize during a potential referendum and also identifies examples of what could be included in a referendum and also provides an opportunity for residents to indicate whether or not they support a referendum and if so, what amount might they be willing to support. Again, that survey is anticipated to arrive at all residential addresses in the city of Fitchburg, which is approximately fifteen thousand addresses. which is approximately 15,000 addresses on or about March 6. There are a couple of ways to complete the survey. One is to do so via the paper copy that will be sent to every residence. That paper copy can simply be completed and then placed in the mail. The postage is paid on the return of that written or paper copy receipt, so it would be at no cost to a resident to complete the paper survey if they so desire to complete it in that fashion. The other option available for our residents to complete the survey is to utilize the survey link that is listed on the front of the printed copy of the survey. Each survey has a unique identification code to identify, obviously, that it was submitted by a residential address within the city of Pittsburgh. We have the website listed on this particular slide here, which is www.survey2000.com. You can simply go to that website, and there's an option for you to enter in the code that you received on the front page of that survey. In addition, on the main landing page at Survey2000, where you enter in that identification code, there is Spanish information there on what to do with that code. And then ultimately, you can complete that survey online, either in English or in Spanish. In addition, if somebody would prefer not to mail their paper copy, they are welcome to drop it off at City Hall, and we will take care of the mailing for them. If folks have more than one resident in their household that is of voting age, they are able to obtain additional printed copies of the survey at City Hall, or they may also call the city clerk's office and request a code that they could utilize in order to enter in an online survey response. Additionally, there'll be printed copies of Spanish surveys here available at City Hall. And folks that do request a printed copy or code from the city clerk's office will be requested to provide a name and residential, their residential address, as we obviously want to ensure that we're hearing from the Pittsburgh residents of voting age that would be the ones potentially voting in a referendum.
I have a question about what's going to be landing in the mail. When somebody gets the mail survey with directions, what, is there any part of that that's in Spanish? And if so, which parts?
Right, yes. So that is, on Friday of last week, draft, actually, the final draft of that survey was shared with all of the council members. And you can see in the front box section of that particular survey is information in Spanish right there on the front page that provides instructions.
So more, more so just asking for the public. I'm, I'm just looking at what was read. I think I looked at a physical copy as well. And I noticed, I don't have it right in front of me at this moment, but when I, when I saw it, I'm, can you pass it down? I just noticed that the part that's in Spanish is just to respond to the survey in Spanish. Click the survey, and I'm wondering if it's possible that there could just be more parts of it in Spanish that actually give the context for what it is? Because if I'm just getting this in the mail and it says, you know, to respond in Spanish, visit survey2000.com, put the code in. But if I'm just seeing this in the mail, I might like not know what it is, and I might not realize what I'm filling out, and maybe be less likely to actually go to the website to figure it out. Like, I'm looking at the piece above that says, we need your input through this survey. And then the main, like, top part of the letter that says, "Fitzburg's experiencing population growth," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Like, that content isn't in Spanish? So I just worry that Spanish-speaking residents that see this aren't going to be able to read that part of it.
So at this point, the survey has gone to the printers, so there are no additional changes are able to be made. What I was going to mention, a news release went out on Tuesday, I believe it was, Monday or Tuesday. That news release will be also translated into Spanish in the next day or so and added to the city's website in an effort to provide additional information. And the city has also added the text of the existing press release that went out directly to the website. So if residents could utilize the translate feature on the city's website and translate that press release into any language that they may like.
Well, I think Joe's concern is that if a Spanish speaker gets this, they aren't even going to know what it's for.
That, that is my concern. And I'm wondering if there can be a little quarter sheet or something that basically says the text of this first paragraph that can be at least stapled onto it or included in the mailing. I know that's a little bit of an additional burden for staff and for the consultant, but I think it's incredibly important to be able to have that intro, to be able to ensure that our Spanish-speaking residents know what they're filling out.
We could certainly inquire if that's a possibility at this stage. And also, the other items that we are intending to do is, when we do additional social media posts, for instance, we intend to do some of those posts in Spanish as well, so we can also look to ensure that some of that information is, is contained in social media posts as well, announcing or announcing that the survey is coming and then also reminding residents to complete the survey.
How did this get, this document get created?
Yeah, this document was created utilizing the consultant that's been hired by the city, who specializes in creating surveys for both school districts and communities. Printer probably a PDF. So actually, they sent us a proposed survey based upon the options assessment that was completed by the consultant, utilizing the information that had been provided. And then we took our team internally, took time to review that and work with the consultants to frame those questions with the content that we hope to have in them, obviously also relying on their expertise as a consulting company that specializes in survey development.
All right. But then, did we send a PDF to the printer?
I assume they get a PDF. I don't know what format they actually get it in.
Well, whatever the, whatever the format is.
Staff did not send that directly to the printer.
Who sent it to the printer?
Our consultant, Miller Communications.
Okay, so do we know if they've received a proof back? Because normally, the printer will produce a proof, and then you can still make changes after the proof comes back.
So if I recall correctly, that proof that we received was the one that was sent to the Common Council. I think a week, whatever, seven days in advance of February 23rd would be. Is that the 16th of February? With an opportunity to provide any feedback by the following Tuesday.
Okay. I don't remember seeing that, but I believe you.
One more, one more question. So when there, when somebody clicks the QR code, does it take them to that, like, kind of bigger document that explains all the, like, is there, is there an electronic copy of that? Like, the one that says, you know, these are the needs in the police department, these are the needs in fire?
It's a 33-page thing?
Yeah, yeah, the big one, yeah.
So the QR code on the survey will take you directly to the survey website.
Okay.
The media release and the social media posting that we're doing is being done in an effort to communicate to our community where they can find more detailed information.
Okay, and skews all the questions. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, I have a thorough understanding. Is, is that large document translated at all?
It has not been translated yet.
Can I request that, that that be translated, at least if there's an electronic version on the website, so that somebody that wants to read more into that information can do that?
Yeah, we can look into see what our options are on whether we translate it into a separate PDF or whether we transfer the text directly to the web and allow the translation, obviously, into multiple languages through that, that option.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chad?
Yeah.
So in the document you displayed tonight, it said, survey2000.com. The QR code takes you to feedback2000.com. And it's, it's, it all goes to schoolperceptions.com. But when you land there, it either says "Community Perceptions" in the header or "School Perceptions" in the header, depending on which link you use.
It's one and the same. It's the same company.
What's with the inconsistency?
They specialize in school surveys and community surveys, hence the name "School Perceptions" and "Community Perceptions."
Which is fine, but, I mean, depending on which link you click on, you're going to see one logo or the other, and that will probably confuse people.
I can assure them that the code that they utilize and this QR code, it'll all go to the same place. And if they would prefer to complete the survey via paper, they're welcome to do that and mail that in if they're concerned about whether or not it's headed to the right location.
So presumably, whatever that 16-digit code is, that determines which survey you will get to see.
It's all one survey.
Well, I'm presuming that the consultant is doing multiple surveys in different communities at the same time.
That is probably correct.
It's a unique code, so if you have that code, it's only applicable for the person who received that in the mail. And then, once they use that code, it's done, used up, and no one else can reuse it. So it is unique to that address.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, because I don't have a code, I don't know what happens when you put the 16-digit code in here.
Once you enter it, then it'll take you right to the survey.
I do think it's problematic that the landing page says "School Perceptions" on it, because this has nothing to do with schools.
Can I ask a question? Did you test this before? Do you, you know, did you test with a fake code and see how it looks everything with them? Did you go through the whole process in like a, you know?
No, we've not been provided with that option, but I have done similar surveys in the past, and they have seemingly worked well.
No, but the question is, if the internal group in the city of Pittsburgh did a testing?
And I answered your question, I said, no, we did not. We weren't afforded that option. So I'll continue on with the next slide. As I mentioned earlier, information was shared last Friday by Adam with the Common Council. Contains several documents that I want to make sure that you're aware of, that you received, one of which is the options assessment that we've referenced, the 30-plus-page document. There's also an options assessment news release contained within there. That was the news release that was created and sent out earlier this week. There's a key messages document in there, as well as FAQs. Some guidelines on what is allowable contact, conduct versus not allowable conduct as it relates to either providing information or advocating for a referendum. And then there was a copy of the final draft of the survey contained as well. As I mentioned, the news release was shared on February 27th. Two media outlets have already run stories that we're aware of, one of which is the Pittsburgh Star and the second is Channel 27. We also have created, and it is live, a page on the city's website that went live earlier this week, where anyone can go to locate information associated with the referendum. Specifically, right now, the documents that are out there are the options assessment, as well as the media release that has been created. As time goes on, and ultimately, if the city council determines that they would like to place a referendum question on the ballot, more information will be added to that landing page to help inform our residents about the referendum and city operations. Sure.
Can I ask a question about the homepage? Because I, I know that we talked, Adam, yesterday about this. When are you planning, because that, yeah, it's, it's live in the website, but it's not easily accessed. We cannot access that, you know, it's not in the homepage. So when is, is it going to be on the homepage? Because it's going to be more easier for residents to find that link.
Yeah, so the first thing we did today was we did pin that under our news and announcements. So we are working on getting those tiles updated. Those tiles are, it's not as easy as it should be. So IT is, is working on trying to get those tiles. We want, we do want to make it one of those, one of those eight tiles on the main homepage. And we'll ideally put it part of the top, maybe one end. But the goal is to get that done as quickly as we can, but it's, it's not as simple as we wished it would be. But for now, we do have it pinned under the news and announcements. We plan on keeping it there. That's below the tiles, just to the left of where that Facebook feed is. So it's, it's currently pinned right there. That's that referencing the report. But we'll, we'll get a link on there as soon as we can.
Yeah, because it's kind of difficult to find that if you don't know exactly the link.
Yep, we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
So some of the referendum guidelines I want to just briefly cover, and I do encourage you to read that document. And most of those largely apply to staff. There are obviously limited exceptions where a staff member could potentially take an avocation or advocating position, one way or another, on the referendum. But in most, vast majority of situations, it's not a permissible activity. Staff is really, generally speaking, only allowed to inform residents about the referendum and city operations. Again, they're not, generally speaking, with few exceptions, allowed to advocate. Elected officials, on the other hand, are a bit different. Obviously, you all are not city employees, and you therefore have a little bit more freedom, so to speak, on what you'd like to share with members of the community. Obviously, you're always encouraged to inform our residents about the referendum and its potential need and/or operational considerations related to the city. And you also are able to advocate, assuming it is on your own time, so to speak, and you're not utilizing any city resources in the process of doing that avocation or advocating.
Can I make that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I am looking at the website now, and I am looking this, you know, Pittsburgh announcement that kind of in the low part, you need to go, and then when you go to the box, it says, "City of Pittsburgh assesses critical need for additional staffing." It doesn't say possible referendum. You know what I mean, something like, it's easy for people to, I don't know. Can we modify that title?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And ideally, when we replace one of those eight tiles.
Yeah, I know, it's going to be.
And we'll actually move the text up. We're going to try to move the text up to the top, if the website will allow it, of the particular tile. So it's also basically, as soon as you click on the main landing page, it'll be evident. So the key messages, there is a document, as I mentioned, that was shared with you. "The city has identified needs for staff, transit, and facilities, largely due to the fact that the city is a rapidly growing community and our ability to increase revenue growth is significantly restricted by state statute." Our net new construction, as you all know, is what's utilized to determine what we can do to increase our levy. And the net new construction often does not adequately cover the cost to provide existing services, the necessary staff, or to enhance services, again, in growing communities such as Pittsburgh. So some next steps, as I mentioned earlier, the surveys hitting mailboxes on or about March 6th. The next Committee of the Whole on March 20th will have a presentation by the survey company. They will talk about the initial return rate and other information related to the survey as it is available at that time. The survey will close on March 22nd. And at the April Committee of the Whole, the survey results will be presented and discussed. And you should have additional information from the survey consultant at that time. The council, if they elect to go to a referendum, we are anticipating that a resolution will be placed on the May 14th Common Council agenda. As an alternative, May 28th is available. And June 5th is a deadline in which the question, any potential referendum question, needs to be submitted to the Dane County Clerk's Office. If the council elects to move forward with a referendum from May to August, we'll continue our work to, to public information and outreach. We'll, as you all have, have been informed. We'll, as you all have, have been informed, Miller Communications, the consultant we hired, has a three-phased approach. We're currently in the second phase of that three-phased approach, that is, the community survey portion of it. And again, ultimately, if the council decides to move to referendum, the third phase of that proposal and contract would be implemented, which again, is community outreach and education. And then, of course, August 13th would be the referendum question. So what we can do currently, what we ask you to do, is encourage people in your networks to complete the survey. We also encourage residents to read the information that's located on the city website. Again, we would encourage you to share that information out with those in your networks. March 20th Committee of the Whole will be the, again, the next update on the referendum. And if anyone has questions that they pose to you, please feel free to either share those questions with either Adam or I, or the city clerk, or direct anyone with questions to Adam or I, or the city clerk. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, just lastly, we'll be pushing out a bunch of Facebook messages for the next week. You're more than welcome to share those on your, you know, whatever accounts you have. So those will be updated, I think, pretty much weekly for the next month here. So I'd encourage you to take a look at those and feel free to share them.
I recorded one this afternoon about the survey.
Okay, I should record one in Spanish.
We can, we can work on that, sure.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
I think it would also be great to do, I know you did the one, notify me. And I, I thought it was, I don't know, the title was pretty eye-catching, in my opinion. I liked the way that was worded. But I do think that, I think a couple more notified me in that period would be more than justified. I know you'd be typical, only do one per kind of issue, but.
So actually, there's a, the consultant has identified a communications plan. So there will be, there's actually a schedule that's already been identified over the next several weeks, in which we'll share additional posts, obviously advising and/or encouraging residents to complete that survey.
And also, just for any residents that are watching, notify me is on the city website. You can sign up to get texts or emails for a whole slew of different city issues that you want to hear about. It is honestly incredible. It's the best way to stay up to date on city news, and I, I wish more people knew about it, because it's incredibly useful. So check out the city website. You should be able to find it on the left side option. There's a notify me, little green square.
Can I add LinkedIn to the social media posts as well? Because I know Fitchburg has a LinkedIn page.
I don't know if that's on the list. Yeah, we can ask. I didn't know we had a LinkedIn page, I'll be honest. I'm not on social media, so I guess that's my own fault. Sure.
Chad, can you tell the council what is the usual rate of return for this type of survey?
Yeah, well, we've inquired of the consultant to, to know that information or learn that information. What they've shared is that their typical rate of return is about 15% of the mailed surveys are returned, either online or via the mail.
This survey is not a self-mailer, though, so it's not something they can just fold up and put a stamp on it.
It is, actually. It comes.
Oh, well, I looked at that document, and it didn't.
Postage included on the return.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
So there must be another page to that mailing that we don't see.
Does it include that envelope?
I don't know if it has an envelope, or if you've just closed it in a certain way, it's then addressed to where it needs to go with the postage indicated. So yeah, it's no cost for a resident to, to complete that survey and mail it back. That's covered within the printing and how it's shipped back. And again, if somebody would prefer to just drop it off at City Hall, we're happy to mail it for them.
So it doesn't come here?
No, it gets returned directly to the consultant.
Got you. All right. The other, something else that just occurred to me. So we're sending this out, it's going to have this 16-digit code in it. What if we have a residence that has more than one person living there?
Yeah, there's a couple options. If you have more than one resident of voting age at the, at the residence, you can either come to City Hall and request a paper copy, or you can request an online code that could be utilized, either by coming in person or by contacting the clerk's office.
Is that explained in here somewhere?
Yes.
All right. I didn't, oh, it's in the box.
Is, is the 16-digit code strictly for an online survey, or is that attached to that physical piece of paper?
The printed copies that would be available here will also have their own unique identifier.
Okay, so it's not possible for, like, if there's two people there, for one to fill it out electronically and one to fill the paper out?
Correct. They're only gonna, that, that code is only going to count for one response.
Chad, can you explain also that, you know, I asked a question to you yesterday about how do we know from where those surveys are coming, which part of the city? So can you explain?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the code, obviously, is linked to the specific address in which that document, or that survey was mailed. So they'll be able to determine, based on that code, where that, or survey response is coming from. So we'll have an idea of where the responses throughout our community are actually coming from, relatively speaking, by neighborhood.
So we've got this options assessment already with, with options A through F. I presume those are still fluid, so based on the survey results, those things can be rearranged significantly.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. That is an important point, that those are merely examples of what could be included at the dollar amounts that are listed, and that they are obviously fluid. The whole point of the survey is to obtain more information from our community, to allow the Common Council with, to have as much information as possible as they formulate a potential question that could go on the referendum. So it is certainly fluid. Julia.
So I don't know if this question is for this meeting, or maybe for March 20th, that I asked this question to you, but I want to share with all the council members. Which one is going to be the statistical sample that is going to determine to us when we had to make the call to decide that, yes, we are moving forward to Phase 3, or no? You know what I mean, like, because we are expecting a rate of return of 15%, it's kind of more than 2,000, suppose, you know what I mean? So, but what happens if we get 500 survey, and most of them, they say, no? You know what I mean? So which is that number that we can feel comfortable and say, yes, it's 500, no? But this is a statistical sample that is a valid number, that we can make the decision? Which one is that magic number?
Yeah, we don't have that information, but we have already shared that that's going to be a question that is, and information that the council is going to want to hear on March 20th. So they should be prepared to provide that information.
Any other questions on this topic? Dave Shannon, I see you're up there. Okay. All right, well, thank you for that presentation. We'll be awaiting the next one. So with that, we will move on to item C, which is a brief overview and discussion involving the next steps regarding the police facility. So as I mentioned last night, I put this on the agenda because I wanted to just provide a little more clarity. So I have one resident who's registered to speak on this item, James Roberts. Where should he go, Scott?
I'm all, I realize as a resident that we need to build a new station. I was not happy with what was presented. It was not within budget. I thought it was way over the top. I think as we move forward, I think you need to look for a reasonable-priced police department with options as far as costs and where we go. I'm not opposed to the police department. I think we've got a very good department. I'd like to keep it that way. But I think also that Hartwig indicating that, you know, having a higher-end department will help with retention and recruitment. I view Fitchburg as a stepping stone. It's a smaller department, bigger departments around. Bigger departments draw people because of pay and benefits. You're going to have people coming in, law enforcement, early on, then they're going to want to move on to state agencies, or federal agencies, or bigger departments. Fitchburg will probably always be a stepping stone for a lot of people with turnover. And I don't think that building a high-end department is necessarily going to change that in any way, shape, or form. I guess that's about it. I just want a more reasonably-priced department for the people of Fitchburg to pay. I think the first one was just way over the top. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, James. So I wanted, I wanted to get a few questions answered by the council. I've, as we've talked about previously, there was a bit of sticker shock with the, with the building. There's some serious disagreement with the training facility. There's also some other questions that came up about the size and different things. So one thing that I would like the council to answer definitively is, is the $35 million an absolute high limit that the council is willing to spend on this facility? This is, this was one of the takeaways from the meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily what the council was communicating, that $35 million was all it wanted to spend. So I want to throw that out as the first discussion point and see where we are with Or maybe just have silence. Randy?
Well, it's really a hard question to answer. You know, 35 million was always just a placeholder. I mean, it's been there forever. I don't know, that's been since there's, since 2014.
Well, it was 25 million for a while.
Well, yes, in 2020, and then it went back to 35 million. So, I mean, how do you, how do you have, how do you work with a number? How do you come up with a number when you don't have the information? And so maybe that's where we go back to the different options.
Right. Any other thoughts?
Bill? I feel like $1,000 per citizen is more than generous. And that's what we're talking about, 35 million for a city of 35,000. That's, that's got to be plenty.
What do you base that on?
The fact that it's above the median for recently constructed facilities.
But there's a certain amount of requirement from, within that building as well.
I mean.
You're just pulling from the air.
Well, any number is just pulling from the air.
But there's a certain amount of needs for within that building. I'd like to see the options, then.
Dave, you had your hand up.
Let me go, I, I think there were, there's some options, you know, talking to the, the construction managers, I think there were some options to reduce the cost to get us, get us down to a number that we could, I think we could begrudgingly agree with, that would give us the features that, that we, we think will have a modern police force. And I disagree with the previous speaker or resident, that I think this will help us retain. But I, I think there is a, there is a middle ground, you know, to, to say, all right, we're at the 35 million, and we're done, kind of like the mayor mentioned at council the other night. Well, I'll go back to example on the hub. We voted, no, we're not putting the roof on there. And then, so she's mayor, then it's back on. So I, I don't think we're, I don't think any way should we be, you know, 35 million, and that's, we can't discuss that number, Jay. I guess that's, that would be my take.
All right, Gabriella.
Just to clarify, the hub is paid for by park fees, which is developers' fees. It's not, it's not taxpayer money. So the hub is not a good analogy for this building.
It was voted down, it was, it was voted down once.
Just saying, it's, it's paid for by developers' fees. It's not paid for by taxpayer money.
Julia?
Yeah, so the only thing is, I, you know, you mentioned about the 35 million. We, we are at the 10 more millions in the CIP last year. But I think we need to understand that we need to build something that we can pay, we can afford as a city, okay? And I remember that we asked the engineer way back, what we can bring as option, okay? We didn't get the option. One of the options was, what can you build for $35 million, or 40, okay? On February 13th, there was a good amendment on the table, it was $42 million, that it was a compromise amendment, and nobody voted for that. So I don't, I don't know why we are talking about this now. I think the engineer and architects are going to, are working right now to determine what they can build with $35 million. This is what I understood that the council approved the other night, because you rejected every single resolution that was on the table, or amendment, so. And I want to tell you again, we have to be careful. We need to build a police station that is, this, the city budget and our city can afford. Yes, it will be great. I would like to go and move to live in Harlem Hills, buy a million-dollar home. Can I afford it? No. So I think we need to determine, yes, we are going to build a police station that is going to have all the functional components that a police station should have, but maybe it's going to be smaller than the one that we, you know, it was proposed originally. But I think we have to be careful, because we are going to ask, maybe ask the resident for a referendum, plus building 40, 15-million-dollar police station on top of that. So we have to be careful what we are asking. That's it.
Well, the reason that I put this on the agenda is because I think part of the problem in this last process was that the council basically wasn't really involved with any of the discussion that went up to it. And then, all of a sudden, you know, we get this $50 million number with all these things that the council didn't ask for. And then, now, we're expected to vote on it without really having, at the council level, any discussion about the police facility. So this is one of the meetings that we need to have. And, you know, frankly, we left this up to the consultant once, and ended up with the disaster that we had two weeks ago. I would prefer not to leave it up to the consultant again, and have the council be more involved in this process, so that we can get a product that all of us can live with. This is, this is a really expensive building. It's going to be one of the most expensive buildings the city will probably ever build. And I think we should get closer to a unanimous vote on it than where we're at right now. So, so I would like us to be part of the process. Now, the, so the only question, I'm not asking the council tonight to just pick a dollar number out of the air. I'm just saying, is $35 million your drop-dead number? Is that the number that you are not willing to spend one penny above? And the reason for that is, I have seen what happens when we place a dollar value on a building, and then expect someone to design within that dollar value. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. And I don't know, I don't know what can be built for $35 million, but I don't necessarily want to spend a bunch of money and have the architect go and design a $35 million building, and then have us realize that's not going to work. So I would like to have a, which is getting into another, another one of the questions I wanted the council to discuss, but Gabriella had her hand up.
I would just say that, you know, we had many hours of conversations. I asked probably 500 questions, that's hyperbole.
Right, at that one meeting, yeah.
But I, the, the thing about the old design was that because it was already set in stone, all the questions we asked about, oh, could you combine these spaces? Can this space be smaller? All those answers were no, because the design was already done.
Right.
So I feel like there are options, if you go back to the drawing board that the architect can present, where they can minimize and combine. And I don't know what that looks like, because I'm not an architect. But I just do believe that there are ways to rework it, so that you can create a smaller space, and a smaller space is going to be a more constrained budget, because that's the bottom line.
Sure.
So I, I really, I don't know. I want to see what the architect would come back with. We've all been here for capital projects. Things, costs are not, are difficult to predict. So when I see a, a design come back that's more moderate, and that, to be honest, based on the votes of the council, does not include a training facility, because that has, I think, has determined to be excessive, and, and something that the, the majority of, or the two-thirds of the council won't support. So if that, whatever that comes back at, I'm interested to take a look. interested to take a look at it. I, I feel like nothing is set in stone because of how, how just the, the construction works. But, but I'm not willing to, to comment on that either. I hope that they can aim to create a facility that's, that's within that budget, and we'll see what happens.
All right, Dave? Here, we can't hear you, Dave.
I, I know, men, but, um, there's several, several things we could do to reduce the cost, you know, the, they've thrown out, you know, the, the second floor, reducing the ceiling height from 10 feet to eight feet, could save nearly a million dollars. A different, a different siding, not a low quality, a very high quality, but it's not a custom, customs design stone. It would still meet the architectural, it'd save significant money. We could finish the training bay, but not furnish it. And then, you know, we, we put that in, we get a grant. I think we, we might be able to come in close to the 42 million that Gabriella was willing to support. And I think maybe we could get Jay on board, that we, we could have what we, what we want for, you know, there could be some consolidations, making space smaller inside, that we could get everything we want just by considering a few options. And I, I believe we would get a, I believe we can get a grant if we, if we put this in that would reduce our, reduce our costs down. So I think we need to look at that. I, that, you know, I don't, the number is too big for me, too. Don't, don't get me wrong. But I don't ever want to deal with this again. And I want to have a force that can attract, attract people. And I want our, our officers trained so they can be safe and protect the public. So that's all I'm going to say on this. Thank you.
Okay. Gabriella?
I also, we had a long discussion in RCC about the sustainability features. That was really productive. And I think a lot of the council does share some of those opinions. But because the operating costs of this facility are going to be extraordinarily expensive, the original estimate was around $500,000, but who knows, annually, $500,000 annually. I think any cost that has a payback period within the life of the building that reduces operating costs is essential. So, so those, those recommendations by the RCC, I think are absolutely, absolutely completely necessary, because it's going to save us a lot of money going down the road through operating costs. So, yeah.
Joe?
And I, I agree. I agree with that. I think that it would be good to have like an analysis of, okay, these sustainability features will pay off on this time. These are the grants that are available. This is the, like, complete payoff. I, I mean, I also think, just going back to the original question, part of my math on it is just some of the comparisons that, that I've seen with other communities and the, the burden on the taxpayers per resident. That's one of my main mathematical reasons for, you know, ensuring we stay within budget, because this is just a huge increase for taxpayers per person. And I, I want to make sure that we're, you know, looking at what impact that it has on, on, on our residents. That's, that's my biggest concern here. And there was an email on January 16th to the council. It came from Greg Columbia, that's listed, you know, a variety of projects that have been built in the past five years. And the per-resident costs in Fitchburg just blew almost all of those projects through the water. And, you know, I, I think comparing this to other police facilities is a fair point of comparison. You know, comparing the county jail per resident to this police facility, comparing the facility that everybody referenced in Atlanta per resident is, is a fair assessment. And this is just way above those.
All right. I received a number, and I think this may have been mentioned in a couple of the emails. I don't know if the council got all those, but I know I received a couple of phone calls from, well, probably about six, asking if we were going to have a referendum on the police station, on building the facility itself. And that's not something we've discussed, really. Although, you know, it is interesting that we can, we can build a police facility and increase taxes by, you know, a couple hundred bucks a year on, on a, the average home without any kind of referendum. But if we want to hire the police officers that we need, then we've got to go to a referendum. So it's kind of a strange oddity in the police, in the state statute. I presume that if, that we could add a referendum question like that once we got something closer to a cost, which hopefully we could do by June, maybe not, I don't know. But is, is having a referendum on this building something that the council would be interested in doing?
Can I ask, can, this project has been in the, in the capital improvement plan for more than, since 2017. So this is not like a, a new project.
I understand.
But, you know, we have been building up, you know, so I don't know, I don't know we need to, at this point, to go to, you know, ask a question, because this has been for seven year in the capital improvement plan. So I don't know.
Was, it was a question I got?
No, I know, I get it. Yeah, because I, I received, some people asked me about that, but I, you know, but it's true, we never discuss. But I don't know.
I've gotten the question from a couple of people as well, but I, just looking at it on the surface, would think that might, is be like, we're going to do this and this in the referendum. So that might be a lot for voters' stomach, and it might risk those other things that we're trying to do failing. So I, I wouldn't be in support of it, because I feel like if we are trying to find more staffing, you know, increased infrastructure, that that might, you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater if you add another, like, large costs on top of that.
Dave?
Don't call off your chairs. I agree with the mayor.
Thank you, Dave.
Mark that down, Julia. You know, we're, we're representative republic, and we're elected representatives. And the example I give you, Jay, you know, California, they go to referendum on, on everything, and it's a, it's a train wreck. You know, we have, we have competent people on this council that disseminate the information to our residents. I, I wouldn't, I would not be in favor of that. I think you've all taken a tour of the existing police station or all the space. It's a bit of a train wreck. I, I would not, I would not favor that, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, Gabriella?
Yeah, so the, I, I would not support going to referendum. We, we all know it's needed. And the only reason that we have to go to referendum for needed staff and transit is because of state statute, because we're not allowed to do that, even though we understand the need for it, as people that deal with these issues day to day. So I see no reason to, to add a referendum for something that we do have control over. We should have control over our staffing as well, but we don't. So.
Yeah. All right. Well, like I said, it was a question that was raised, so I thought I would have some discussion on it so people know where we're coming from. Jim?
My only concern is, we're not talking about the future of policing. And the future of policing, you know, already people were talking about cahoots, talking about having social workers. So where are you going to put all these people?
Right.
I mean, it's, so it's just like, if we're just going to have a building that's going to be what we need right now, then we may be building something else in the future. AI is becoming more and more available to people. So now we got to look at, do we need officers? Do we need computer specialists, analysts? So now we got to look at, where are we going to put those servers that got to be separate from the network into a room? So I think, I, I think we need to talk about the future of policing, because it's going to change. I mean, you can't get the officers you need anymore. So we're going to have to find a way to actually do things with less officers. You know, we may have to go to a self-reporting system. Where are you going to put that? So if we keep going, we're going to go smaller and smaller and smaller, and not actually look at the future of policing or predicting where policing is going. I, I think we're going to be wasting, you know, some money, because we're not thinking about that. And that has to come into the conversation, not just what we're looking at right now, right here.
Yeah, and I, you and I have talked about this, and I completely agree with that, that there needs to be, there should have been a discussion about what is the future of our police department going to be before we started engaging in designing a building for whatever that police department might be. Because we don't know. And I, you know, there's, there's questions about, I, I mean, I have serious questions right now. We still have vacancies in our department right now. We've authorized a grant, we've received a grant to hire three more. We're going to be asking the voters for, is it five or six more, possibly, in the referendum. And we may not be able to hire them. There, there may just not be any bodies available for us to hire. So what are we going to do? We're building a, you know, the, the previous proposal was to build a facility that might be able to accommodate a sworn staff of 80 or 90. And what if we can't even come close to that ever? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what it's going to take to get people interested in going into law enforcement again. But right now, there's just a shortage. And, and I don't, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I have questions. And there probably aren't really any answers to those questions, but they are, they are things that apply here nonetheless. So that would be, that, that brings me to another, another one of the questions I wanted the council to discuss briefly, which is, in the idea of, of what is the future of policing going to be, do we want to allocate more, would we, would we want the, the, the architect to allocate more space for things like social workers and not necessarily sworn officers, but other types of support staff, so that we don't have to send a police officer to every one of these things that comes up, that, you know, maybe doesn't require a police officer, but that's the only people we have? What are your thoughts on that? Joe?
So, Mayor, I know we were, like, it had been mentioned in some of the community meetings, like the utilization of the CARES program and other things. How does, and Jim might know, how does, how does Madison utilize it? Do they put everybody in their buildings? Or do they have, like, are they in City Hall? Like, where, where are non-law enforcement staff that responds?
Well, they work with the fire department.
Okay.
And also with Tellurium, Tellurian is, or George, I don't know.
Tellurian, yeah.
And then they are using, you know, their old city, town of Madison City Hall. So they are, they are there. They're already from there.
They're also on Williamson Street, I believe. There's two, two locations.
Two locations, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah. But also they have to, you know, buy unmarked cars, and there are more other expenses.
Sure. So, I mean, I, I, I think if, if and when we do implement kind of alternative responses, I don't have enough information to know whether it's ideal to place those staff in a police station, or place them in City Hall, or place them in another building. I, I would like to know what other communities are doing, and what kind of the best practices for this type of collaboration is before I give my opinion. I think that would be something that we probably need to study, you know, in the same way that I feel like we need to study some of these additional components of the facility, rather than just put them right in front of us to decide.
Sure. Julia?
So I have another question is, you know, because the city applied for that grant, but the grant is for building the training bay.
Right. That question's coming up.
So, because the council decided not to, you know, reject that option. So what happened if we get awarded that money? You know, Chad, have you?
So if the city were to be awarded that grant, it would come in front of the council, would be my understanding, whether or not they are going to accept that grant. And then the council would, would act on whether or not they're going to accept it.
So, yeah, there would, that, the next question was going to be, do we want the police department to continue pursuing that particular grant, the training facility grant? What, what was the amount of that? Do you, is, is there a fixed amount, or?
If I recall correctly, it was around six and a half million.
Okay.
I mean, I've said this in public meetings, I've said it here. I, I think before we opt to build such a facility, we should look into the feasibility of the need for training across the region, across the county, at the very least, with other municipalities, rather than us taking it on ourselves. Because again, like, I think Madison built theirs about a decade ago or a little bit more. And that was when they had a really much higher population than we currently have. And I, I, I just, I think we really need to look at, like, something cross-municipal, because we're not going to get anywhere near the size of a Madison, you know, anytime soon. And there are also other municipalities that are similar size to us, that probably have the same needs. I wouldn't feel at this point comfortable with us hosting this regional facility that brings in other people. I think it should be, it should be a planned effort between multiple municipalities, or something that's implemented at the county level, or, or through, you know, our technical college system.
So the, the, the problem with that is, and we, we were looking at this years ago when, involving Fitchrona. We can, we can share operating expenses with another municipality in regard to joining, operating a joint fire, joint EMS district, or even a joint police district, they allow for that. But statute doesn't allow capital expenditures to be spent outside of your municipal boundary. So, so like, if Manona wanted to contribute a mil, a million dollars, let's just say, Manona wants to contribute a million dollars, they can't. Because you can't, you can't use capital expenditures outside of your municipal boundary. So that's the challenge, I think. It would, it would seem that a facility like this, if it was going to be done, would have to be a county expenditure. And I'm not sure Dane County's got any appetite for doing anything like this anytime soon. Dave?
Well, I would add, you know, it's, it's built for the size to service us. You know, it's not, it's not being, you know, it has to be a certain size to take up our apartment, but we wouldn't be using it all the time. And that's when the other municipalities would, would, would rent, would rent the space and help us defer. We're not building this thing four times as large to host, you know, all these communities that would like to use it. You know, we're building it the size that, that we need it, and they'll be, you know, we're not in it all the time, or not be using it all the time. It's not being oversized. It's being built for, for us, but we would, we would be willing to let other communities use it to offset our costs. And quite, you know, quite substantially, they might, they might offset our operating costs for the whole facility by a decent amount. So I don't think we should lose, lose sight of it. You know, it would be used regionally, but it's built for the size that, that we, you know, that we feel we would need to, for that training.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I've, I understand your concern, Joe, about the, the training facility and, and the perceptions of the community also. I do think right now our officers are not getting all the training that they would like to have. And not just firearm training, but, but scenario training, different kinds of things, that they, they need to be able to be more skilled at using, for example, non-lethal force in attempting to subdue somebody. So it is, you know, like you, well, not like you, because you're like totally opposed. But I, I'm, I've, I'm really torn on what direction to go, because I think it is a necessary thing that we should provide. But, you know, it's, it's becoming very contentious in our community. And I know a lot of people were concerned about one particular organization at our last council meeting. But the bottom line is, we got a lot of emails, and a lot of those emails were from Fitchburg residents who didn't have anything to do with that organization, and they were opposed to it also. So I think we need to, there's going to be some more work that we'll have to do if we're going to try to sell that. But the real question is, should staff be working on pursuing this $6 million? So that's really the question I want to try to drive at tonight, so that, you know, staff knows whether they should waste their time on it anymore. Julia?
I am not going to answer that question, but I want to tell, ask a question to all of us, like, you know, we know that this region is growing a lot. And eventually, you know, Madison. And eventually, you know, Madison has almost 450 officers that are using that training facility. And all of the surrounding municipality, we are growing. And I think, I want to put my business hat, not my mayor hat. And I want to tell you that in seven, I don't know, it's, it's a need that we need immediately, but in the next five to 10 year, Madison can say, you know what? All the small municipality surrounded, you know, we don't have more capacity for you to train here. Okay? And then can say, you know what? You need to find another place. And the closest place that we have right now is going to be Toma, two hours away. So the question is, I know that the, is, is, you know, I, I remove my personal opinion, but I am putting my opportunity, my business hat, and I say, it's going to, there is going to be a need for us, for our fire department to find a place to train in a couple of years, five to 10 years. That's it. Not only our department, it's going to be Verona, Oregon, all of, you know, San Prairie, they will need to find a place to train. The question is, I know that for some of you is, you know, you know, the training facility is a no-go, but I think we need to think in, in the next 10 years, what is going to happen? There's going to be a real need. That's it.
Gabriella?
I mean, I said the exact same thing at the last meeting, but the, it's a huge risk to our taxpayers. Because, you know, we talk about grant funding, but grant funding is only good for the upfront cost of the facility. It's not good for operating costs and it's not good for replacement costs. We have no idea what equipment is going to be like. We had the chiller in the library failed and we're on the hook for hundreds of thousands of dollars. If that happened with this $2 million HVAC system, that's, that's, that's completely Pittsburgh taxpayers on the hook for that. And that's why these types of facilities are not run by a small municipality like us. And if we had complete control over our finances, if we could just, you know, raise the revenue that we needed to pay for the things that we want to pay for, that might be a different case, but that's not the world we live in. We live in a world that the state tells us we can only raise the taxes by some, by an amount that's not enough to actually meet our needs. So that's the world we live in. And so operating costs and those like emergent capital costs are very risky. And I think it's, it's too much of a risk. And I, I agree that there seems to be an issue, but I don't think that issue is the responsibility of the Pittsburgh taxpayers to solve for the region. And I, I understand that that's a difficult thing and there's obviously challenges to navigate, but if we had more time to think about what that solutions could be, that would be good, but obviously we need a facility. And I don't want to delay a facility, which is why I tried to offer the, the compromise, where just remove the training facility and build the, build the current facility without, without the training bay, because I understand the need to move a facility along in the near future. So I, I do feel like there's, there's a little bit of a, it's in a bad spot. Like I wish we had started talking about this two, three years ago. Because then maybe we could have worked through these issues and figured it out. But that's not where we are. So I just, for me, it's too big of a liability for the city of Pittsburgh. And yes, thank you.
Well, you, you touched on two things that I, the first topic that I brought up is, is the $35 million a drop dead number. The reason I ask that question is because when we built the library, we had a, we, there was, there was artificially put a $500 cap on the geothermal system. And so because that was, that was limited by the council at the time to $500,000 and not one penny more, when it came time to installing that system, there were decisions that were made to cut costs and to cheapen it up a bit. And that's why we just had that $200,000 chiller replacement. Because, and so I don't want to see us do that with any other project ever again where we put an artificial made up dollar cap on something and we're required to cheapen it up to a point where it's no longer functional in the long term. That, that is something that I really have a problem with. Dave?
Jay, back to your, your first question about the grant, about the training, you know, the, the grant is based on regional cooperation. And other chiefs and other departments, and I've talked to a couple, said, well, you know, if we're coming, we want to come for a complete, or tactical fire, you know, whatever the whole, whole thing. So if you don't have, the, getting a grant is based on regional cooperation and, and so you're not going to get it without these, these training facilities, you know? Don't even bother having them do it. I don't, if, if we're building a fire, a police station just for ourselves, there's no regional value and you won't, you won't get any grants. So that's all I wanted to say.
The last thing, and I know we're close to nine o'clock and I didn't want to go past nine, so the last thing I wanted us to discuss briefly is one of the, one of the thoughts that I had early on, and I still have now, is should we direct the architect to design something that meets our needs for say, the next 10, 10 years? And then plan in 10 years on adding onto that building? And I know it's going to cost more, whatever. The thing is, right now, we, we need to do something. We need to get a ball rolling. We probably aren't going to be able to build a building right now that's going to meet 30 years of our need. So do we want to build this building specifically, have it architecturally designed so that it can be added on to? Or do we want to consider the idea that if we don't build it that way, in 10, 15 years, we'll be looking to build another building somewhere else?
Bill?
Bill?
Yeah, I mean, the, the question was posed several times and, and every time we've asked it, we've been told, no, it's impossible to make it, you know, to build it for, in addition to be put on in the future because we need to have specific components. And if you're, you know, if you're going to build a room for your evidence, you need to make it a certain size. If you're going to build a holding cell, it's got to be a certain size. If you, you know, the lab's got to be a certain size, et cetera. And so that was what, what they came back with was, you know, it's, it's basically impossible to build for expansion. And I don't know that that's entirely true or, you know, if that's true for certain components, but not others.
Well, I think, I think it's true for certain components, but not others. I think we're going to build two holding cells. We're going to build two holding cells whether we build this, you know, for now or for 30 years or even for 50 years down the road, we probably aren't going to need more than two holding cells. So we're going to build that, that's what it's going to be. You're right, the certain things that you build can't really be futzed with too much in the future, like, like the evidence in the lab rooms, those have to be built to a certain size. But there's a lot of stuff in this building that are not those things. There's, I mean, I think, I think if you're going to build the locker and shower rooms, those have to be built to the size you're expecting that you're going to need within this building. But the, I think the question is, are we thinking that this building is going to be one of two buildings in the future? Or is it going to be one that's going to be added on to? Because like the office space, that you can add on to anytime. And that's, you know, that's much less expensive space to build than the stuff that can't be changed. You know, it's like the evidence room is the evidence room. There's a lot of stuff in there that is expensive, the, the way you have to store things, you know, all that stuff. It's, that's an expensive part of the building to build. And as the locker rooms are and shower rooms and all that stuff. But if we're going to build it and then say maybe in 10 years, we're going to add on the additional desk space and other things. And maybe, you know, maybe we don't build the garage as large as what's being, what's being asked for right now. Maybe we build it so, you know, we expand the garage in the future. I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas because I'm not an architect either, but Julia had something.
Yeah, no, I want to echo what you mentioned, that there are, there are, you know, components that, you know, that like, there was a hundred, what is, community room that maybe, do we need to have a community room right now? Maybe we can use the one that we have in the city campus and maybe add that. The garage is another option, is, you know, it was hosting like 36 car, maybe can house 20, I don't know. But there are other, all the, all the size of the entry, you know, the lobby, maybe we can reduce the size. I don't know, there are other component that we can reduce and we can add in the future and, but the, the functional component, this is what I said, when we talk about functional component, are the, what are those component that they make a police station? It has to be there.
Yeah, Joe?
This is a question for Jim, just because you've been in a bigger department. And I know the chief had answered this in one of the informational meetings, but like, what's, what's your math on precincts versus no precincts? Like if Pittsburgh, like what's the, how big does Pittsburgh get in order to have like another station somewhere else versus just building on to the current facility?
Yeah, that's one that's going to be hard to answer because it's going to be geographically, you know, where are you going to place it? So are we looking at if we're going to be expanding south? You know, do we put a station there? I mean, do we need one on the north side of town? So I, I think a lot more discussion needs to be had before we can discuss precincts. You know, and do, do you actually want to decentralize that way? Or do you want to, you know, maybe have an apartment building where the landlord says, hey, we'll give you an apartment, that could be like a substation. So, I mean, those are things that would have to be discussed. And I mean, it can be done. I mean, I'm probably more, and I had this discussion before. I, I like decentralization, but then decentralization can cause some issues. You know, because the further away you are from the central area, you know, now you've got to make sure that these stations or precincts don't develop a culture of their own. So now you need more supervision. So like I said, there's a lot to kind of talk about.
Bill? Oh, Dave?
So one thing we might, might want to ask, can the building be built so that we could go up? You know, can it be designed so it's sturdy enough that we could add a floor in the, in the future, you know? 15 years down the road, you know, that might be worth something to consider. I, I'm, I don't, I'm not an architect, I don't know how those things work, but I, I believe you could, you could design it so you had enough structural strength to, you know, add a floor in the future. That's all.
At $500 a square foot, it better be strong enough to go up a floor or two. Bill?
Yeah, well, I'll just, I'll echo what Dave said. And then that has been proposed by several people several times. And again, I think, I feel like there was pushback from the, from the architects and I'm not entirely sure why.
Well, as Gabriella mentioned earlier, I think the reason why is because they had a design. They had their schematic design and thou shalt not touch the schematic design once it's done. So that's why I wanted to have this conversation early on. And I want to have more conversations as we get, as we move through this process because we need to have, we need to have more discussion prior to there being a schematic design. Jim?
This is where I'm having trouble. I don't know the vision of the chief for a future police department. And, you know, how can we design something to go into the future? I mean, what, what is the vision? And, and you know, even with the training bay, you know, I'm all for training because I read consent decrees from Department of Justice, read 21st century policing ideas, training, training, training. But even with that, what is the training plan as far as what are we going to be looking at? Because there's some things in training that, and I had talked to the chief about this. I would like to see a sergeant that's basically monitoring every police incident that's happening out there, that's bad to know, to know what we can learn from it. I would like to have somebody looking at Supreme Court cases, appeal court cases, because those things always change. You know, so you've got to train that up as far as making sure your officers are on top of the current training. What are the hazards that are facing officers? What are the best practices? I haven't heard any of that. You know, so I need more information on where are we going with this? You know, and I, I just think, I don't know if we have the time or what to actually do it. But it's been one of my frustrations and I think that's one of the things that's been lacking for me in this process. I mean, I hear this would be nice to do and hear bits and pieces, but I'm not the chief. So I have a hard time saying, well, chief, this is what you should do. I mean, this is, this is on the chief. Chief's got to come up with a vision on where we're going to go in the future.
Bill?
I just wanted to go back to the idea of precincts for a while. The chief at one of the public information meetings said that you wouldn't think about having another precinct until you reach roughly 100,000 population. And the question was posed, well, is that really based strictly on population or is some of that based on geography? You know, if Pittsburgh being a township, six by six square miles, that's a lot bigger than our neighboring municipalities. And so, I mean, I can understand, you've got patrol officers that are, you know, they're out cruising the entire city. It's not, it's not quite like the, the fire department where, you know, a call comes in and they have, and everybody's based in with particular location. But I still feel like, you know, you might, you might go for another precinct if you've got sufficient population in multiple areas of the city. And I don't know if, Jim, if you've got any insight into that? You know, there was, like I said, a little bit of discussion at that public meeting, but nothing in depth.
Well, in Madison, we just did, we broke up the city in geographic areas. So, you know, we had the north, southeast, west, and then we added midtown. And that was based, you know, a lot on the number of officers we were getting, the type of workload that's in the district that necessitated that. And I mean, it, it's a process. It's, it's something that you don't come up with an answer easily. And then, you know, have to do some type of assessment because, I mean, that's what we did in Madison. You know, when we went out decentralized. Because when I started in 91, I mean, we weren't as decentralized as we are now. We only have one experimental station on the, on the south side. But as the city grew and you want your officers to be in the community, that's when we started to decentralize to geographic areas of the department.
But even in 91, Madison would only have been, you know, like 150, 180,000 people. So, Julia?
So the other thing that, you know, like you mentioned about the future of policing and also, you know, we talk about the community police officer, this is the type of police that we, officer that we want to be in the community, working on those neighborhood. So that one is another question, you know, like, they need to, you know what I mean? How do you send them to those neighborhood and where, you know what I mean? So that one is something that to think about, if that one is what we want for our police department to be more in the neighborhood with that type of police officers instead of being the car, you know, driving around. So that one changed a lot of the dynamic of the conversation of what we, what we want to see, you know what I mean?
Well, when we, when we got our first cops grant back in, I think it was 98, the idea, that was to hire three officers and the, the, the specific requirements then were that these be neighborhood officers. So at that point, we did contract with a couple of the apartment complexes and we actually had a space, I think there was a space in the fountains, that was before it was the new fountains, it was still the old fountains. And I think we had one at Chalet and I think we had one in what was still called Ridgewood at the time. So, which is now, it was, I think it was on the fairways side. So that's where we put those officers, but, and they actually did walking patrols through the neighborhoods. They'd, you'd actually see them out on the sidewalk sometimes. But as our needs have changed and as our availability of police officers has dwindled a bit, we don't have those positions anymore. Everyone's in a car. So I, I would like us to get back to something where we have neighborhood police officers where people kind of get used to, to seeing a police officer as somebody who's in the neighborhood, not just as somebody who comes to take care of a problem. So, but, you know, that's getting, that's kind of our philosophy of policing and getting a little far afield of this facility.
But I think that, I think that five officer that we got But I think that five officers that we got through the grant, they are neighborhood police, police officers. Yeah, yeah.
So we may, we'll probably be revisiting that issue again. But I don't, so, I don't know, do you feel like you have more information now, Chad, to pass on to the architect?
Are you paying attention?
Didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No, I think what, what we're, you know, what we're doing at this point in time is, is working with the construction management firm that we've hired to assess the design that was presented a couple of weeks ago, to determine if it's even feasible to reduce and remove areas of that facility to come in, in the ballpark of 35 million. That obviously could be challenging to get to that point. I suspect that what's going to happen is we're going to need to redesign a building that is more likely to come in at or around 35 million. That's really the instruction, you know, the two options that I've instructed the design team to focus on at this point in time. It's clear that sustainability needs to be a component of the building. I have relayed that and will continue to relay that. I'm not sensing that there's enough support at this point in time for a training bay. So I don't envision that that would be included or likely to even be feasible financially in a $35 million option. And I think with a $35 million option, clearly it ideally would be designed in a way that could be added on to in the future, if that's what a future council elected to do, or if at that time, the, a future council and/or police department determined that perhaps a district station would be, would be appropriate. But at the end of the day, at 35 million, I think you're going to be focusing strictly on the core functions of a police facility, and those core functions, in general terms, are an area for command staff, an area for patrol officers, an area for detectives, an area for records specialists, an area for dispatch, area for civilian professional staff, and an area for equipment, vehicles, and evidence processing and storage. And at that point in time, you know, you're not going to have a lot of flexibility as to what size those spaces are going to be. The architect's clearly going to have to work creatively to appropriately size those areas, create areas that can be expanded in the future if, if need be, try to size those areas that are more difficult to expand in the future as appropriately as possible for a reasonable amount of time, you know, ideally probably 15 to 20 years. So I don't, I don't anticipate there's going to be a lot of flexibility with the space at $35 million. And, and that's, if that's, that's what the council is comfortable with at this point in time, that's what the council is comfortable with at this point in time. I would, if, if the council desires additional options, we know that's going to cost obviously more money to design additional options. It's possible that it may cost additional money to design a facility strictly at, at or around 35 million. And if we then also expect a facility design or options that are, you know, say 40-ish million, you know, that's another, that's another project that has to basically be designed, that takes time, that takes money. And I don't know as though the budget at 35 million is going to be able to accommodate all of those requests. If you look at, I think right now, we have, we're estimating approximately $2 million in architectural design and construction management oversight fees. We have approximately $2.5 million identified as the cost, at least as the facility was originally designed at 74,000, 75,000 square feet for sustainability measures. Obviously, a $35 million project is going to need to be, or likely going to need to have less square footage, so perhaps, you know, even if we use $2 million as the potential cost for sustainability, we're at $4 million. You look at, obviously, having a contingency, using, you know, 10% is $3 million. You have furniture, fixtures, and equipment, is, you know, likely to be another $1 to $2 million would be my estimate, and all of a sudden, you really have about $25 to $27 million for actual building construction costs. And I think that, I think that that is going to obviously significantly limit the size of the facility, the length of time in which the facility will be at capacity, or significantly shorten the time before the facility is at capacity. But what I have heard overall, and it was a long-winded response, and my apologies for taking that time, length of time, Jay, to answer your question, is I'm feeling as though, and I haven't heard convincing evidence to the contrary, that the council wants to see something at 35 million. And if there's a different instruction you'd like me to provide to the design team, this would certainly be the opportunity to do that. Otherwise, if we continue to debate what a potential budget might look like at this point in time, we're just, we're just kind of here waiting. And every, obviously, week that goes by, we're not getting a project designed, we're not getting a project presented to council for further consideration, and the costs obviously will continue to rise.
Julia?
Okay, so, so I have, I want to ask a question to the council, okay? What about is, you know, we keep the 35, but we know the sustainable feature is very important, and we, maybe we don't know that we are going to have all the money to do it. If I include in the CIP, and the next one is coming, like, maybe $3, $5 million to cover the sustainable feature for the police station to add, so we can cover that? What do you think? I am throwing this?
I'm just, I said at the beginning, but it's like, I, I don't know what a facility that's a little bit more moderate would cost. Like, I just think that the design we saw felt to many people as excessive. And like you said, and you repeated me, when you have a design that's set, changing little bits is impossible because the schematic design exists, so like, making small changes is impossible. So I guess I just believe that there is a more modest version of that facility that has all the needs, the absolute needs, but minimizes some of the nice to haves and the wants. I don't know what that costs. My guess is it costs more than 35 million, and I'm the person that voted for a $42 million facility two weeks ago. So, I don't know, I just like, I, I'm not attached to a number, but I do think that we need to, I would like to see a facility that has, that is scaled down and that is compromised on the parts that are compromisable. And I don't love the idea of adding on at a later date. I think that sounds very expensive, and I'm, the concern of mine is the overall expense to the city. And that's a balancing act between paying now or paying later. But yeah, so.
But you mentioned that the, I don't know, I think you're contradicting your say, Gabriella, because you say the money is not an issue for me, but then you say that it is an issue for you. So I want to understand, you know what I mean? You mentioned that, you know what I mean? So I want to understand if you have a limit, you know what I mean? Because...
I mean, so I don't know what it costs to build a facility, so I can't, I can't say that I limit it, but I'm just saying that, like, I think in the presentations, it's clear that there are certain things that are needs and that it's impossible to expand on it. I don't know what that, my guess is it costs more than 35 million to build the base minimum version of this facility. I don't know, but I just, I felt like there was, there can be at this point, an effort to minimize the costs. And I'd like to know what that looks like, because it's based on design, it's not based on a number.
Jim?
So Chad, are the architects coming up with a plan that reduces square footage? I mean, what's actually happening to get this into $35 million?
The current step that's in process is working with Pepper Construction to identify if the existing design can be reduced, cut, and/or otherwise, you know, reasonably adjusted to get us in the ballpark of 35 million. If that's not possible, then I think the next step is, is that the architectural firm will need to design a space that is in the ballpark of $35 million to demonstrate to the council what you get at $35 million. If the council has an appetite to say, well, we'd like to see what a facility might look like and get us at $40 million, then we would focus, obviously, the initial or next design at that, trying to achieve that number, or seeking to achieve that number. So that's, that's really where we're at at this point in time. You know, absent further direction from the council, there's 35 million in the CIP, and that's, that's the number that, that I think the council has, has at least defaulted to at this point in time, and until the council has provided me and/or the design team with some indication that you have, have a desire to see something other than 35 million, we'll put that together. But again, multiple options continue will cost money to draw and create, and also creates time.
There's got to be a way.
Jay, can I ask this one more question? So how long do we expect the building to last? I mean, what are we shooting for? I mean, are we shoot, going to shoot for 80 officers, or are we going to just reduce that and maybe, I don't know, go with 60? I mean, so...
Well, we're at 55 sworn right now, with, you know, approximately 12 to 14 professional non-sworn staff, so we already have, you know, roughly 70 full-time employees working in the police department, which is about 15,000 net square feet. So, you know, even if you kept a similar officer to population ratio, and, you know, we can certainly debate what an appropriate staffing level might look like for a city as unique as Pittsburgh, when you talk about geography and the type of calls that are responded to, you know, I don't know what that number looks like. I mean, you know, 10 years out, you know, if you had 750 people a year on average, you know, what does that equate to if you keep, keep the officer to population ratio at the same? If you, you know, increase that to what we, what the department had traditionally been staffed at, you know, what does that number look like? I mean, there's a little bit of a range that would have to be identified there to have an understanding of what, how much time you might get from a facility. I would assume that this council would prefer to get at least 10 years out of a facility. Yeah, I mean, I would, the longer the better, let's be honest. I mean, this is obviously a complicated decision, and, and I, and I think everybody recognizes, recognizes that, you know, and that's, that's the balance that, that the council has asked for us to try to, to strike here right now, is what, what does an approximate dollar amount get you from a square footage perspective? And how long do we anticipate that's going to, to be lasting, so to speak, until it's at or over capacity? I don't have that answer right now. I mean, obviously, I know that the 2014 staffing analysis that was done on a high level indicated, you know, we, we needed about 75,000 square feet by the mid 2030s. I don't recall what it identified in the mid 2020s, or really by the time this facility gets built, it's an 18-month build, right? We're looking at 2026 at the earliest, and right now, we're trending towards 2027 or later before we're actually in this facility. And I, and I would be remiss if I didn't remind the council that we're also at space needs within the second and third floor of City Hall. I mean, I'm literally with the two positions that have been added this year, assigning basically the last two desks that are available without requiring some expensive remodel to create additional spaces within City Hall for people to be able to work out of. So even if we're looking at 26 or 27, that's still another couple of years before we can even significantly address the, the space needs within City Hall. So I don't have to, I don't have to tell you guys this, I know you know it, but I'm going to say it, the clock is ticking.
I, I get it, Chad, and this is why, you know, we need to, we need to determine, this is why I am throwing this on the table to, to say, how do you feel that we, you know, we had, in the CIP, we had another $5 million to this project, so at least to, to cover the sustainable features, so because I, we really would, for me, it's a priority that this building has all the best sustainable features that we can get, because we also can get the, what is the credit or whatever it is, you know, for the federal government. But, but, as I say, we need to move on. I would like to see this, I would like to see by the fall that we already say, okay, let's, we have something ready to go. That one should be our goal, this is what we need to, we need to move on with this. We cannot postpone anymore, because we need also phase two to start rolling.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to have this meeting tonight, is because I think this discussion was a really good discussion, and I think it is getting the council more involved in this project, which I think the council's wanted. What I was trying to say before is that I just cannot believe that there is no way for the construction management company and the architect to come up with a couple of, not a full schematic design, but just something smaller, just, or something less detailed, and give us a couple of options that we can say, yes, we like this one, move ahead with that, no, we don't like that, no, we like that one, move ahead with that. And, you know, I mean, these guys are professionals, they do this every day, so there's got to be a point where they can bring to the council, say, two options, and say, this one's a $35 million option, this one's a $40 million option, which one do you want us to flesh out more?
So I understand where you're at with it, and here's, here's the challenge that's associated with that, that request is, is that we hire a construction management firm and a architect to work in concert with one another to provide us with, here's, here's the design, here's what the project looks like, and the construction management company to weigh in on the, the design, so it's obviously a reasonable construction to minimize our costs to actually build the, the building, but then, more importantly, to provide us with the cost estimates as to what that building is going to likely come in at when it's bid, because the whole, one of the main points of hiring the construction management company is to avoid surprises when the bids are open. So, and in order for the construction management company to put good numbers together, they need the designs refined enough. You know, if you look at it this way, if you have, you know, two or three options that say, okay, tell us what it's going to cost us to get, you know, build a 50,000 square foot building, or 60,000 square foot building, or 75,000 square foot building, at that level, they're going to say, well, what do you got in it? Well, we don't know yet. We don't know yet what's in it. We don't know how the walls look like, we don't know what the materials look like. I can give you a ballpark based on a square foot, you know, per square foot cost. So they actually need the design to be worked down and continued to be refined, because throughout the entire process, they're going to continue to provide updates, again, with the whole intent to be, we stay on track budget-wise, and we avoid surprises when we open the bids. So, again, I understand why, why folks would want to see that, but, but it's, it's not necessarily compatible to get that refined of a number. We're really talking 100,000 square feet, 100, 100-foot, or 100,000-foot view to be able to produce that. If you want, you know, a rough number, and if you want a more exact number, then we're ultimately paying to have multiple designs done in order to get a better number as to what it's going to cost.
I have a question. But we, we have, I think, a very good idea how much is a square foot for it, for, for this type of facility? So that one is a key number, and then we know that we cannot build 74,000, because it's 50 million. So, okay, so we know that maybe this police station had to be reduced, maybe 20,000 feet had to be reduced. So, you know what I mean? So we, and then in the, but suppose it's 55,000 square feet, but they had to have the core components, you know, you mentioned, you know what I mean? We know the other number, so I think we can have a very good idea how close we are, a 35, or we are close to 40. I don't know. You know what I mean? So, so we, because we have an actual amount of how much is, is 600, $600 for square foot?
It was around 5, it was around 560.
Actually, I think it was close, it was somewhere in the vicinity of 650, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, something like that.
And that, if you simply...
Well, that included the land prep, that was beyond... That was beyond just the construction of the building.
Well, which of course we would still need to do regardless.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, just using that, that cost, you know, I just, I don't recall the exact number, but I recall that it was approximately $650 a square foot for total construction costs, including furniture fixtures, equipment, all the things. So simply dividing 650 by 35 million, or 35 million by 650 is about 53,000 square feet. So.
Maybe we need to.
That's generally speaking, probably in the range, you know, I would guess, somewhere between 45 and 60,000 square feet is probably where you would end up to be at 35 million. And then obviously, when you talk about the core functions that I mentioned earlier, you know, that obviously puts the parameter as, as to what size those particular core functions can be designed to. And that's where, that's where we end up at.
Well, what, what was the square footage of the Training Bay?
I think that was about 6,500 square feet, roughly.
Okay, and then what was the square footage of the community room?
That includes the community room.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that was one of the things is that I, I think if you get rid of the Training Bay, you get rid of the community room because the reason for that community room is that it's part of the training thing.
It's part of the, really? It was part of the training that it was in the basement?
That was why it had to be, that was why it had to be 100, 100 seats because when people come in for training.
But that one is a community room, it's not a training room.
Oh, no, it's.
But it's not part of, I am talking about the Training Bay. How, how big was a Training Bay?
Oh.
So my recollection is, is that the community room could be utilized, obviously, for the classroom portion of any sort of training that was taking place. So they are one, you know, they are related. And if I recall correctly, the square footage of the Training, the Training Bay and the community room is approximately 6,500 square feet.
Okay, so right now the police station is, is they are in the basement. They are 17,000 square feet, isn't it?
74,000.
Seven, no.
Current, current.
Oh, down here. I think it's 15,000, 15 or 16.
15, 17. So if we're going to 50,000 square feet, it's a big jump. You know what I mean? It's like, you know, they're, they can have a very nice place, you know what I mean? Compared to what they have, it's not going to, it's not going to be for 40 years, it's not going to be for 30 years, but we are building it for the 10 to 15-year or 20. So, but this is, this is what we, this is what the council said that we can afford right now, you know what I mean? So if we want to get to the magic number, we need to go to, I think it's 50,000 square feet. I don't know.
I do like Dave's suggestion early on in the meeting, though, of lowering the ceiling height on the second floor to eight feet instead of 10. Because you said that would save about a million dollars, right?
I don't, it might have been 600,000.
Well, $600,000 is $600,000.
I suspect that becomes a natural byproduct of a 50,000-square-foot building, right? If you're trying to get that at $35 million, then.
Be 55, yeah.
The natural byproduct is, is you're going to find ways where you can reduce costs, such as reducing ceiling heights where appropriate.
So to answer the question you asked earlier, I think adding a separate line item with, say, $4 million in it for the sustainability features, I, yeah, I think that's a good, good thing to do. When, when we did the library, we did that as two separate things. We had the library construction and then we had the, um, we had the geothermal and, and reinforcing the roof for potential solar panels in the future. So, um, I think that's something that makes sense and provides a little more flexibility. So, all right, it's 9:30. Do we want to talk about this some more?
No, move to adjourn.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
In that case, well, before we do.
Well, one second. Are you, are you indicating there's support for that or, or not? I mean, I think.
I'm going to put it in the CIP, so.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if people are going to remove it, but I, I want to protect those sustainable feature and other one that they, because the architect go and say, you know, the engineer say, we go, we don't have the money, we are going to, you know, reduce those one, you know what I mean? So, I don't know.
Okay, well, uh, take that under information at this point in time.
See, there you go.
And, uh, we'll likely still look at the $35 million option. And, uh, obviously, as we had done with the, the previous option presented, break out the estimated costs for sustainability features.
All right. With that, I will, we'll move on to announcements. Our, remember that our next committee of the whole meeting is on March 20th, the third Wednesday instead of the fourth Wednesday. We announced that last month and that's still the case. And if, without seeing any other discussion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made, seconded by Joe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.